Staying that we don't have sound.
Is that better? Oh, I don't. It's I think it's your microphone actually like.
Okay.
It was me. I missed the button. So for those that are online, you didn't miss anything other than approval of the agenda here.
Oh, it's just Lisa Justin in Michael's.
Um, we're we're in public comment. Um, do we have anyone in public that wants to speak in this first kind of public comment window? If so, um, feel free to sign in and talk. Um, do we have any not district, non-district attendees?
Do not.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll move right into the um, report from our student representative. Oh, uh, nope. I skipped board comment. I'm sorry. Board comment. Um. Does anyone have comments since we met only last week? Okay. Now, now Gracie's report.
I mean, since we met last week, I don't really have much to to tell you guys. Um, spring sports are are still in full swing. I know we have a track meet at home today and a baseball game and softball game home today. Um, so busy season, but I think currently we're just looking forward to break next week.
Thank you. Um, does anyone have questions before we move on? Student body? Okay. Um, so with that, we're into um, the um, superintendent's report. Dr. D'Angelo, are we going straight into budget?
I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. Um, obviously, since we were together last week, everything is pretty much caught up, except um, our robotics competition was this past weekend and um, kudos to our team for giving it a great valiant effort. I was able to see a couple heats on Friday. Um, just a reminder that we are closed this Friday in observance of the holiday and then next week is the um, break week. And spring sports have started. You've heard that. Last but not least, I just want to mention a little bit about some of the recent school security uh, things that have been going on. As many of you know, um, that last week we experienced what was called a swatting uh, incident um, pretty widespread throughout New York State. Uh, the governor has spoken and is in touch with the state education department and they're working diligently to try to figure out um, who the bad actors in 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 these particular instances. This morning, uh, the North Country fifty plus schools got hit pretty hard by a bomb threat. Again, um, it was um, it was an email pretty generic, but it was pretty disruptive. Many of the schools up north, Canton and others had to do two hour delays, three hour delays, and some never opened up. So um, this is certainly um, of concern. Uh, there seems to be a new trend. There's been some indication that it perhaps is coming from uh, outside the United States and um, we've been reassured that our that law enforcement, state police, um, and and other appropriate agencies are are working on it to try to curtail it. So I just wanted to uh, it it did uh, force us to go into a brief lockout last week. Um, it's always very um, disconcerting and you know, we we don't take that lightly. It 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 provides a situation with a lot of anxiety and uh, and additional um, trauma for our students, our parents, our teachers. However, some of our colleagues in the region like Skodak experienced a true swatting uh, event where the state police and other law enforcement agencies showed up and they went into full lockdown. Uh, they were in classrooms. They were cleared by police that are that were fully armed and um, you know, I'm hearing nothing but very traumatic stories from uh, from districts who had to go through that. So uh, we 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 live in a new era and we take school uh, security very seriously. And I just wanted to mention that. Um, now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Truddy while I get his PowerPoint presentation for the final phase of the budget and Mr. Truddy, it's all yours.
All right. So first of all, first off, I'd like to thank the board members, Pat, Beth, and Chris, and our community member Dave Laveau, also Sal and Pat Juliano for uh, attending the meetings over the last three months. Um. So tonight I'm going to go through. I'm not going to go in depth on these slides. This is really a summation of everything I've discussed over the last three months. Uh, we had a meeting last uh, week actually that I kind of gave a highlight of where we were at. There has been an adjustment to that and I have some good news which I'll discuss for the tax levy. As stated, we've been trying to keep things in line and keep, you know, keep the tax levy lower this year, um, especially with the revaluation. Um, so let's go through if you could. So for state aid. This is exactly what I talked about in January because Governor Hokel doesn't have a finalized budget yet. Um, but I'm comfortable with these numbers. Um, I checked the transportation, the BOSIs. Uh, all the reimbursable aids. Uh, the main thing that I feel comfortable with is foundation aid was the minimum. We get the, we get the uh, the minimum, which was three percent. And I've been doing this seventeen years and I've never seen an executive budget come out and then the legislative, the final budget be lower. So I feel comfortable with that number. Obviously, we're going to go with the numbers that we have at this point in time, but I do feel comfortable and a lot of my counterparts are actually adopting budgets this uh, tonight. So everyone's going to have to go with a similar scenario. I feel comfortable. We'll get that minimum. We're going to get the minimum. So it's not like we're getting a lot more, but in the end it's one hundred and fifty nine thousand. It definitely does help our budget. Uh, next slide. So this is an area that I discussed with finance that I have not spoke to the board yet. Um, I'm going to briefly go through. This is some of the other revenues. You can see it's five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred nineteen thousand, six forty nine, increase of one hundred and twenty one thousand. So those, um, keeping a lot of the budget code similar penalties on taxes. That's for late taxes. It's a two percent penalty. We typically get thirty six to forty between thirty six and forty thousand a year. I kept that the same. Continuing it in drivers that as I stated, we also have an offset of expense in the budget. This is kind of a neutral. We get revenue and it's offset with expense. Interest income is the one I changed. So I did increase that eighty thousand. So that was a significant jump. The rates were uh, almost nothing for several years and we finally have getting increases. I actually had a meeting with our bank on Friday. We were going to get another jump in the rate, which I was very happy, but I am being conservative also because if we have a recession and things turn, you know, we have a bank issue right now. Rates could go back down. So but I feel comfortable with going up to one hundred and ten thousand or an eighty thousand dollar increase. Pilot, I've talked about every year about the seniors uh, citizen apartments behind the old price chopper that goes up by two point five percent. Rental property and buses is the same. That's our head start. We get eight thousand for that room that that it ran out. And then we get about a thousand dollars of running our buses, a lot of kids club activities. Other revenues, the other one I changed, and this is some tuition students. This is model schools reimbursement from BOSIs, sub reimbursement from BOSIs. A lot of similar things, but what I did do is I adjusted thirty one thousand because as we discussed with this uh, new speech therapist that we put in the budget and Brian discussed, we'll have someone here five days a week. They can bill back on the pre-K students. So this Brian calculated a number and it's about thirty one thousand dollars. So that's the revenue and we also are going to decrease the contract for that. So the net cost of having someone five days a week instead of one and a half is going to be about twenty, depending on health insurance between ten and twenty. So I put that in the budget. Medicaid reimbursement uh, kept the same and then health rebate. What I did do is I uh, health rebate with COVID, we were getting some rebates and we've I've elected to take that over four years and some prescription rebate. So we can kind of budget that instead of being one time revenue, we can also help. You know, there's going to be a cliff eventually, but I'm still, I still have another couple of years in that. So I did increase that slightly. So total other revenue is one hundred and twenty one thousand, three forty six. So if we go to the next slide for revenues. State aid, um, I just discussed one hundred and fifty nine thousand, nine thirty two. The other revenues we just discussed Medicaid. So the big number, obviously, to balance out our budget is property taxes. So the good news, and I'll talk about, I'll briefly talk about the expense slide, um, just the update. We were waiting on the health insurance numbers. And they came in very favorably. We were in a good bucket. Um, we've had good and and the rates went from seven percent with that I received in January and I just got those uh, late last week and it's three and a half percent. So what that means is I could take that money is a one hundred and twenty five thousand dollar decrease in our health benefits. Um, we applied that. Remember last week we talked about two point five one. We were at the tax levy and we discussed this over finance and we're comfortable going out with one point nine eight percent. So that'll be the biggest decrease from the tax cap in the history of the tax cap at this district. So I was very happy we could do that. Finance committee, uh, you know, we're very on board with the recommendation. So that number is one point nine eight percent increase. And then our appropriated fund balance, we kept the same. That's the contingent money we carry over each year uh, in the budget. So total revenue going up seven hundred and fifty four thousand, one ninety one. And then if we go to the expense slot, expense slide. Or this, um, I'm not going to go through these. This is the program highlights, uh, capital project. This is what was discussed. When we had the uh, we had the teachers here discussing. So we did put all those phase ones in the budget. A lot of them were uh, budget neutral. There was no cost, you know, might be a stipend or it might be some summer curriculum that we already have budgeted. So all those electives literacy coach, uh, because we had a position that went away that we were able to offset. So the only one that really costs money was the speech pathologist, but as I discussed, we have the revenue and we have the, we got, we're getting out of that contractual agreement for next year. So there'll be a slight uh, increase in that that I budgeted. The capital projects, the high school auditorium, we talked about fixing this before we do, you know, all the work in there with the capital project. So that's going to be the painting, really, a lot of the auditorium, and then we're going to do some instructional upgrade, but very excited to take care of that before we take the seats and do everything with that. So on the expense, we went over this last meeting, the only, like I said, the ma- major change from what I've discussed over the last three months is employee benefits with the rates for health insurance dropping from seven to three and a half. Now it's going up to, uh, employee benefits are going up two hundred and forty two thousand, five nine two or two point four seven. So like I said, that's about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar decrease. That's what allowed us to lower our tax levy. Go to the next slide. I just, I show what tax cap limits are for districts. Um, I do not discuss where they're going and because decisions are made at the last minute, but you can see this year because of inflation, we are in the higher range for tax caps for districts. Go to the next slide. I always like to show historical uh, view of our cap and levy. So I think this is twelve years. We've had that. As you can see, the average rate, one point eight six percent. It's been under two. As you can see, three point five two on the bottom is our our cap and we're going at one nine eight. So this is the biggest decrease in the history of the tax cap for Chatham. And you can see, I think it's half the years we've tried to go a little bit under when we can to keep taxes down, but you know, we've made an effort this year and I'm happy we were able to come through with that. Next slide. So the last slide, uh, like I said, the tax cap three point five two and we're we're recommending one point nine eight percent increase. That's what I have on the budget. So any, you know, any questions, kind of the stuff that we discussed over the last three months?
Can we go back to a couple of things? One, the uh, sorry, I was trying to study numbers as you were talking. Um, the plan for the um, high school auditorium, that's seats. Is it just seats?
No, no, that's before we do the capital project that was voter approved, where we're going to do the seats and all that work. I wanted to do a, this is a hundred thousand dollar project that we do in our budget every year, a small project. So like we're doing the electronic sign this year. So we came up with, why don't we paint, paint up the auditorium, which hasn't been done in forever. Uh, the ceilings, fix the ceilings, paint and then do some instructional upgrade. So it's adable. So that's what we want to do with this hundred thousand dollar project. So we can do all that before when the capital project, the big project's done, when they take the seats, we'll have that all painted.
Okay. So we're, we're going to do surfaces and some, some other things that maybe aren't going to get covered in the uh.
Yeah, this is a small, remember, this is about ninety thousand dollars with the work.
Yeah. Presumably that wouldn't cover like lighting updates or anything.
No, no.
Is that a contingent or no for the larger project?
We're trying to get a grant for the lighting. We're trying to get it. We're trying to get approval for it.
The um. I'm, I was trying to follow the on slide. Two and three.
Okay.
Um. On slide three, we have this uh. No, it's three and four. So we have the, the on slide four, there's a other revenue number.
Yep.
Um, is that supposed to be a roll up of the previous slide?
Yeah, that's correct. But you got to add the Medicaid. Is the Medicaid's included in that? The fifty thousand? So the fifty thousand on the next slide, we break out, we show the table. So if you add the two numbers, it's five nineteen.
Got it.
So four sixty nine plus fifty is five nine, five nineteen.
I don't, I don't have any other questions. We've been through most of this already.
Yeah, I was thrilled with that.
I, it's, it's a great number for the year. A little bit worried about what's going to happen next year when they correct, but.
We discussed it, but we feel comfortable with our financial reserve plan. Our reserves were strong financially. So I felt comfortable, you know?
If they go to, if they go to like, I mean, historically, they've done ten percent sometimes during some of these.
Oh, for health?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've sometimes had eight, but we've, we've trended higher.
It's been a while since it was ten, but I I remember that.
When I was here, when I started here, we were trending high and then now it's come down some. I mean, not going to trend that way forever. So that's, that's the positive, but we've had good uh, we've been in the good bucket too, which helps.
What, what drives those um, swings? Do you know what meaning?
Well, consultant and we, we nego, they negotiate. We have consultants negotiate on our consortium. So we have, you know, purchasing power because we have all the BOSIs districts pretty much in this.
Yeah.
And then they negotiate the rates with, you know, Blue Cross, Blue Shield or CDP HP. And like I said, some rates and and even on overhaul, when we talk about it, you can't go up ten percent forever. It would be impossible. So we've had some years where we had high increases and then it's going to trend, you know, I think it trend about six, five, six. So but they in January it was seven percent. You know, sometimes it comes down a little. Uh, but this came down, they were able to get some, you know, some of the rebates back and such that they could lower the rate and and also if we're in a good bucket, that helps. We don't get, there's a not a bigger add on.
But in, in general, in general, unfortunately, the way it works is um, they tally up their profits and losses at the end of the year. And they make sure that they have steady returns. And then they just recalculate rates to keep them.
And we, and we have money built in our health so we can absorb some of this. You know, this is all, we plan, remember, we plan five to ten years, not one. So that helps.
But if, if like, if the actuaries screw up, we eat it in the following year. Like, that's just what happens. I think, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna pass this next week. We have a hearing first. Oh, it's tonight. Okay. Okay. Anyone else have questions before we move on? Sal, anything else in your report? All right. With that, we are into a committee report from policy. Pat, we had a quick update last week, but um. I, we, well, we, we, I'll tell you what we did last week is we went over uh, the, the shared document. Um. I, I presume you guys already covered that in meeting, right? So and I don't think we discussed anything else last time, right, Ed Board? Okay.
Um, the policy committee, we met last Friday and um, um, we're, you know, obviously aware of the document, the shared document that's out there and the policies to date that we have reviewed, being uploaded to it. Um, we have slowly made our way up through the five thousand series. We're about, you know, midway through the five thousand series. Um. So uh, a number of the policies that we reviewed and uh, are felt comfortable with, we've uploaded that to the shared document. Also, uh, in your, on the agenda, you have a copy of the updated uh, spreadsheet with the comments of where we're at. Um, so the biggest, you know, the biggest uh, additions were, for instance, the uh, the policies and the computer usage. And uh, and the other big change would be the accounting uh, uh, accounting funds. Those are really the biggest changes. We have a few more uh, of the first half of the series of the five thousand set. We're still working on those policies uh, after some discussion and um, uh, then we'll, the next meeting, we're going to go to hopefully finish at the five thousand series. And our next meeting is first of, of May. Uh, so that's where we're at. Um, we only made for roughly an hour and a half. We do meet, so discussion takes up a lot of the time. We tried to do a lot of work beforehand. So everybody's up, you know, has reviewed the policies, the changes uh, that are suggested and all that. And uh, and then we have discussions on those policies. We have some, you know, issues with or concerns about. Uh, so it, it does at times, you know, it's slow going. It does, you know, uh, in order for us to cover everything. Um, but we are slowly making our way through.
Yeah, I see um. See notes all the way into eight thousands here. So.
Well, those are the related computer usage because they crossed over and you've got to remember that NISV really has, doesn't have policies broken down between sections like we currently have based on our old policy service. So they tend to have one policy, which is the way we're going. So what we've tried to do is look for those policies that are related and make sure that we are addressing them all. And it only makes sense to address those other policies at the same time as we address the one uh, policy three quartet.
Um, I, I have one question for policy, if only because this is all fresh in your head right now, but maybe you haven't gotten to this section. Um, every year, um, the auditors bring us the complaint about the uh, cash receipts for clubs. Um, is that covered in any of the policies?
We are actually, if you notice, uh, those two, that policy and the one on extracurricular activities are still, we're still looking at was we, we want to make sure that we have it covered correctly.
Well, that's the activity fund, but that's school funds, right? I think it's, it's the cash receipts from donations, right? And and when the clubs sell stuff that they, they ding us on.
They write that for everyone because they're not sitting there watching it. So they're not going to say we sat there and watched you do the cash. So they write that on every single district.
But, but, but it wasn't the activity funds that I don't think they found for us that there was a, that, that as well?
Activity fund. Oh, it is that. That's what they're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
And you, we can, you can only do so much in, in a school environment.
Yeah, well, if we, as long as we say we discussed it and we, we accept, you know, the risk.
But we are, yeah, we are still looking at it. We're making sure we're, you know, we, we're talking with the individuals that are in charge and all that and making sure that we have an understanding of the all the circumstances before we finalize our policy. And that's what, that's what takes up a lot of the discussion time. We're making sure that we understand what is happening and why.
Okay. I, I don't have any other questions for policy. You guys? Um, you, you're moving a little bit faster than I anticipated. Um. We didn't really talk, I think when we talked timelines last, it was, we were thinking maybe you were going to get first like drafted together by the end of summer, maybe. Is that, I don't know, what, how are you feeling about speed right now?
We, we're just, I would, I would, yeah, we.
Well, we were guessing. We're just like dart, throwing darts.
Ideally, you know, we should be maybe hitting one section each month, but that doesn't work out because, you know, discussion alone takes, you know, takes up most of our time. As, as much as we're doing outside of that meeting, meeting hour. Um, so I honestly don't know what we're going to encounter once we get to the other sections. We're just going to have to, you know, if we, if we want to do it right, we can't rush through.
Are we planning to, to pass any of the uh, you know, amended sections this, this year or not until the fall likely? Yeah, this.
I, I, I don't think it's realistic because there's so many of them that are interrelated and the, in the succeeding, we're finding. So we don't, you know, we don't want to fi- finalize earlier sections until we know for sure we have nothing that's related in the subsequent sections.
Unless something urgent comes out. Which, you know, during COVID, we had plenty of those urgent moments, but.
Ideally, I would love to have it done. Our review done by the end of May. So we, but that's, you know, that's just, that's wishful thinking.
That's, it's fine to wish. Uh, all right. Well, uh, we can move on into finance, uh, although we covered that already. You have anything to add?
I, I really don't. Yeah, this was, you know, um, we went into this year uh, hoping we could offset some of the concerns of public uh, taxpayers. And I think we've done a really good job of, of doing so and still allowing us to have the programs we need uh, and the staffing we need here. And uh, and not really having to cut back on anything.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? Pat? All right. Thanks, Pat. Uh, West Star, three board seats and budget. Uh. This is the annuals, uh, board seat slate they bring us as well as their budget. Uh. I don't know if everyone here is familiar with how they operate, but Chatham's only responsible for covering the uh, the overhead. The rest of its um. You know, the rest of their budget is really for services delivered out to districts. I don't think there's, there's any major changes this year, right? There's incremental. Oh, there's, yeah, well, I, I wish there was competition for seats, but uh, I think that they have just as hard of a time as we do is at, at recruiting. Although I think there, it's only annual meetings or sorry, monthly meetings for them, right? Like that. I think, uh. But if anyone ever wants to run for BOSIs, uh. We sent one candidate in like the last fifteen years or something like that up there. So. She was, she was as well. Okay. Well, yeah, no, Melanie's, well, you know, she may not, she may not be there for I don't know. I haven't talked to her this year, but she's there now, but when her term's up, I don't know if she'll do it again. Anyone have questions that we should send up uh, with our Questar group? Brad, you might have missed this, but we've got some people going up for the meeting. But that's now the end of April. Got rescheduled? Or it's? Okay. Okay. Um, the, the note here says it would be voting for the four candidates as they are on four twenty five. Well, that's when their term starts? Or is that? Okay. Okay. Uh. No questions there. We'll move on into new business.
R forty four, be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt the tentative twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four educational plan and budget in the amount of thirty four million, three hundred and seventy two thousand, two hundred and ninety two dollars. Can I have a motion?
Sure.
Any questions about today's adoption? All in favor? Any opposed? And R forty five, be it resolved, the Board of Education approve the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four property tax report card? Can I have a motion? Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? I have a question. Um, when does that get posted? Tomorrow. And are, get submitted tomorrow? They try and run around fast? Uh, R forty six, be it resolved at the Board of Education, accept consensus agenda J through K as written. Can I have a motion? Questions or comments? This is a really short consensus tonight. It's two meetings ago. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Uh, items for future agenda. Just curious if we, um. Have any interest in, uh, running for the board from the community? You've heard any? Any sparks?
So we, um, petitions were available, um. May, or March seventeenth and our due back April seventeenth, and we've since had two, two persons pick up petitions.
Okay.
So we still have, we still have one open seat and if, if that goes empty, we would, um. We would either have the option to call an additional special election or appoint, I presume. But that's how that would work. We would, we would go back into. Yeah, if there's a single vote for a write-in, then yep. So if someone misses the petition deadline. And there's only one, you know, person, they could just vote for themselves and that would be that. Um, which is very easy. I don't know if we've ever run totally short before. I don't remember that happening.
We did.
Yeah, yes, Graham. We had one, one board member in my tenure here that was elected by write-in vote.
Okay. Um, we still have to set goals. Our, our, our goal for goals was, um. To get it done before summer, so these guys can bring it into plan. Perhaps if I had anticipated this meeting being so short, uh, a few weeks ago, we, we could have slotted a workshop into the meeting. Um. We could spend a couple of minutes in discussion right now, but probably what makes sense is that we agree to a schedule right now. So.
We have the administrative team meeting on, I believe it's the eighteenth. That's two weeks from today. Um, working on their building vision and building goals and, and perhaps. Um, it, that may help inform. Some information for the board.
Be available shortly thereafter, then.
At least in, in.
Sketch form?
Yeah, in, in outline form, some of the things that the principals wish to advance in their own buildings and, and that's. And you've got Dr. Root is connected, um, as well, and she's helping facilitate that. Um, we can report back after that takes, uh, we've got a meeting on the twenty. If, is that the Tuesday, twenty, let's see. Twenty fifth. Right, so we could, we could report back on the twenty fifth to give you some idea of where they would like to see their individual buildings go and, you know, ideally. Um, the board coming up with the overarching vision and then having those two, um, connected would be ideal.
So we have the option to, um. Meet before the election, but after we have, um, the administrator's sketch, we have the option to, uh. Uh, do a workshop during lame duck territory or, um. After, uh, new members are, what the organizational meeting is.
July eleventh.
July eleventh. It's a little late, um, probably for us to do it then. So I think we ideally wanted to have things ready by, by June. So, um. Does anyone have any thoughts before I broad dates?
My, my thought is maybe we would need two meetings at least. That's just my intuition, but. I could be wrong, but that's, that's my prediction.
All right, probably right with that, Chris. It also say one before lame duck session. Uh, sort of get a big vision and then if we have to go in the lame duck session to finalize.
Um. So, uh. Should we shoot for the last week of April or is that, um. We already have a meeting that week. Um. Yeah. We, um. I don't, we don't, we don't, um, either of those dates would work. I guess the question is, um. Is there any advantage to doing it on a business meeting versus a special meeting? I'm all for, if there's not much on the agenda for the business meeting, keeping it short like this and then maybe setting up the room differently. To do something a little, um. More collaborative. Well, I, I think we were, we were waiting for, you guys are meeting on April eighteenth, right? We're waiting for them to have, uh, the administrators to meet on April eighteenth and then they're gonna, um. They have their own process and they, I'm going to guess they're going to need at least a couple of days after that to put something together.
On the twenty fifth.
That would be an option or, uh.
Does this short?
Yeah. I'm, I'm in favor of that. I think it's.
Okay. Well, what could we do for meeting format that day? Would it be reasonable to conclude the business meeting and the agenda? And then have our workshop outside the context of a, of a formal meeting?
Sure.
Okay. So we would, um, maybe let's plan to, unless something exigent comes up. Keep the agenda on that night, um, had, uh. You know, similar length to tonight. We'll. Well, what's, what's blocked? Yeah, what's blocked it? What about, what about superintendents?
I. And sometimes those drafts we carry over from the previous year. Right?
No, because we're not going to have a meeting and finance is not, we're not, there won't be.
Do you guys have any business for that night?
Not, not currently. I do potentially expect, uh, an executive session. Because we were entering, uh, time where, uh, we have contract negotiations for one of our units. So I need to speak to the board in terms of getting some direction and, um. And then if there's any updates in some of the ongoing, um. Items that we have in executive session.
So why don't we tentatively schedule it for, um, for seven? With the understanding that if the agenda runs longer than an hour, that we're, we're cutting into that and there'll probably be a bio break between. And we'll maybe move the tables around and. In between, does that sound good to everyone? Um, do you, I think last time, um. Who do you want to bring, Sal?
I think for this particular one, we would just have Dr. Rude and Mr. Chuddy join us.
Okay.
And then as we, um. Move through the strategic planning process, perhaps this summer, we could have another workshop where we invite the administrative team to join us like we've done in the past.
Do we have, um. Do we have a smart board on wheels or? Do we have something that we can draw on?
Yep, we can, we've used a, a traditional rolling whiteboard in the past.
Yeah, that's great.
We'll have to locate that, but we've used that pretty successfully.
Okay. So that'll be for the D twenty fifth.
Again, I, I, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but you know, we, our hope is that, um. We will be cognizant of the fact that we have, you know, we, we already have a literacy program and. We've done a lot of work this year on, uh, teacher and student voice and so that those threads can be, can be extended into another year as well. So taking that into consideration.
Yeah, and I, I don't think, um, I think we want, we wanted the district to have, um. The board plan, um, for their process over the summer, but I don't think anyone here was expecting. Um, drastic course corrections in the, inside the district. We're trying to, I think we all agreed, we're looking at it at least a three-year board. A jet, like, plan, not necessarily a district plan. The district plan will follow.
Great.
With that, uh, we are back to second public comment. This is an open public comment for any. Um, district stakeholders that would like to speak on any topics affecting the district? Any digital hands, any, in, in, anyone in the room?
Wanted the record to reflect that we have six. Online participants appears perhaps some students and some administrators, but six.
If anyone would like to speak, um, you can either come to the front of the room and sign in, or you can raise a digital hand and we'll give you a couple of minutes. Um, and I'll just wait a minute to see if anyone is interested in that and then we'll, we'll adjourn if not. Any digital hands?
No, none at this time.
Okay. Uh, with that, uh, motion to adjourn. All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.